Okay, I would like to call to order the Avalon City Council meeting. And we will also be acting as the Avalon Municipal Hospital Board of Trustees this Tuesday, November 16th. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And you may be seated, I just wanted to say, I'd forgotten it was just five days ago that we had that fire in the interior, and I want to thank the gods for the light winds because, and the direction, if there was any wind, it could have been devastating. Want to thank our firefighters, they did an exceptional job, and LA County as well. You've got such a great team and you work so well together, we want to thank you for that. And for some of these, some of our younger firefighters, this was their first time, right, in doing something like that. I know you're going to report out on it, so I'm not going to say anymore, but I just want to, on behalf of the council and the whole town, the whole island, we want to thank you for your hard work, it was fantastic. Thank you. And that's all I have. Oh, yeah, that's it. Okay, roll call please.
Councilmember De La Rosa?
Here.
Councilmember Lavelle?
Here.
Councilmember Ponce?
Here.
Mayor Fortem Cassidy?
Here.
Mayor Marshall?
Here. Are there any announcements or written communications?
I have none, Mayor.
Okay. Presentation.
I know we have several representatives from Avalon schools and I'm...
Hi, everyone, I'm Yurin Alaskar, the principal at Avalon K-12. Good evening, everyone, I'm Emma Pagaro, and I'm the co-administrator of Avalon K-12.
Welcome.
Thank you for having us.
I think it's going to be on this side.
Oh, look at that.
So, thank you again for having us. We wanted to come by and just revisit the school mission and vision. This year, we welcomed our students back after our COVID distance learning year, and so we're very grateful for the invite and grateful to just re-center our work around our school's mission and vision, and provide that information to the community, as well as clarity around some new things that we have. And so, the first slide that we have here are our new school guidelines for success. So, these are four guidelines that our instructional leadership team came up with last year as a revamping of what it means for our students to be successful K-12. In the past, we had school guidelines, but they were a little bit convoluted, they varied from level to level, so it was hard for students in elementary, when they were transitioning to middle and to high school, to have the same consistent guidelines for success. So, our instructional leadership team narrowed down our guidelines to these four guidelines, and they follow a student from kinder through 12th grade. And Emma can speak a little bit about this as well, but they are obviously differentiated, so what it means to be a Lancer that listens to understand in kinder is going to look different than when you're in 11th grade, but those foundational blocks are very much built in kinder, first, second, and third grades, so by the time that you are basically a young adult on our campus, you have a really clear understanding of what it means to listen to your colleagues, your community members with an empathetic ear. So, that's just an example of the first one. Yeah, so we were also thinking about Lancers as far as our adult staff as well, and knowing that these are robust enough to be applicable really throughout our entire school, from our custodian, to our principal, to our classroom teachers, to our recades, to our van drivers, so we're all held to these guidelines. We were able to roll out some expectations assemblies, K through 12, and it was basically, everybody received the same information, same presentation. It was a little differentiated for the littles, but really the message was the same, highlighting these four. One of the key ones was that Lancers are accountable to self and community, and really taking that ownership about, within their own behavior, actions, and the way that they bring their best self forward. So, knowing how they're accountable to themselves, their classroom community, school community, and then our community, our island community as well. And then the last two that we have on here, Lancers leverage technology. We really feel like this was a glow from our COVID distance learning years. There is many challenges for our students, but one thing that students came out with, really not only resilient in their own learning, but really resilient in the use of technology. And so, a lot of the technologies that our students and teachers used last year, we really want to continue to leverage in learning this year. So, that is one of our guidelines for success. And then the last one, Lancers lead by example, goes along with Lancers are accountable to self and community, but really puts the ownership on school members and students, teachers, everyone, to really lead through their own example. And we actually had this at our high school level, we had a situation where a student felt angered with a friend, and he was like, Ms. Laskar, Ms. Pagaro, like, what do you want me to do? Like, I really want to respond, like, in an angry way, what should I do? And we referenced this guideline specifically, and said, we want you to lead by example. So, what does that look like to you if you're leading by example? And so, it was a concise and direct way to engage our kiddo in that moment, so that's just an example. So, our school vision and mission. Our mission is from kindergarten through graduation, Avalon High School. Avalon School is committed to maintaining rigorous academic expectations and encouraging the personal integrity of state and supportive environment while fostering development of 21st century college and career skills. So, our vision is that every student acts with integrity, pursues success, and contributes positively both to themselves and to society. So, this year, we are going through our WASC accreditation. It's a huge self-study, where we're really diving into all kinds of components of our school, and aligning our work to our vision and mission, and finding the gaps that exist, and creating some action plans to fill those gaps. And one thing to really highlight about our mission that has really inspired our work moving forward, is that we really, really want to focus on that 21st century college and career skill component. So, what that looks like for our school this year and in our five-year plan, is really being intentional about our college-going mission, and really ensuring that college is an option for all students, regardless of if they should choose it or not. And I know in the past, there's a lot of talk about having trade programs at our schools, bringing the trades back. We are very open to that, however, we really want to be mindful that that does not replace a college readiness for our students, because that is an essential 21st century skill for them, and it is really pivotal in us closing the equity gap that's present at our school. So, we're really, really committed to ensuring that all of our students have the option for college, and are ready to either access a community college, a state school, an out-of-state private university, by the time they graduate with us. So, we're really centering our work around that. I spoke a little bit about our WASC accreditation, and finding some gaps in our, in our system. We are actually going to be having a virtual visit from the WASC committee on November 29th through the 1st. They're going to engage our, a student group, a community stakeholder group, a parent group, and teacher groups, to really dive into these different components of our school and our system. And then, we're hoping for a six-year accreditation. We would also be, you know, potentially get a three-year, and then a mid-cycle review again. And it really gives us that chance to really talk about our school, what is working, and then also recognizing that we have improvement. And then, I also wanted to add, as part of our mission and vision, just some highlights of new things that we're showcasing with WASC, and that we've also incorporated. This is the first year that we are really moving forward with setting the foundation for a linked learning pathway at our school. So, similar to the high schools over town, we really want to be able to bring an industry connection for our kids that is directly linked to rigorous academics. And Mr. Romo has done a fantastic job with his CTE curriculum, and this year, really linking hospitality and tourism to rigorous academics. We have a vision where we really would like to build out that pathway, and really connecting hospitality and tourism directly to marine biology and the sciences, and making that connection clear for our kids, so that it can really open up the college-going culture that we know our kids are capable of. So, one of the critical learner needs that surfaced from our self-study was a data-driven cycles of inquiry. These are ways that we are increasing academic achievement, really collecting data, analyzing that data, and then determining our focus areas, and then analyzing. So, these are called the PDSA cycles. And it became one of the areas of need, and really engaging our teachers and our staff, and everybody in these cycles of inquiry, where we're really learning about our system, and then deciding to adopt, abandon, or revise them. So, this is our first one. And then, our second critical learner need is focus on relationships and culture, creating a positive perception of school, culture and climate among our staff, students, and our community. Things that we're looking to do is to implement restorative justice practices, also increasing our communication within our staff, students, and parents. One of the, one of the areas that we actually grew in last year was sense of belonging, and our core survey data from students that did jump significantly, significantly. However, now that we're back in person, we really want to monitor that and make sure it's still trending upwards. The other one is increasing our attendance rates and decreasing our chronic truancies, and again, as Ms. Laskar spoke to the college and technical education, linking our course offerings. Our third critical learner need, we noticed and recognized that our English language learners are still achieving below our English-only students, or our recently reclassified students. So, we have data from different assessments that they take, state assessments, but really promoting an asset mindset around the strengths of our ELs, because we know that our students who are coming to us with a different language than English, also bring with them rich experiences that we could tap into and learn from. So, developing a growth mindset environment is also an area of need, where students feel safe in taking those academic risks. One highlight that I know the community has heard about is that we are finally being able to use our Measure E money from the district and the state. We are completely starting an overhaul of our campus, which will modernize our campus and provide us with air conditioning, it'll provide us with new fixtures in our buildings, and it will also provide us partially with a school fence, which will increase our campus security. So, we are really excited about Measure E starting. And Phase 1 starts this January, and you'll see, it's kind of difficult on this PowerPoint, but it's the yellow shaded border area, building G, our shop area, and our top bungalows will be the first to be reconstructed. And so, we are really excited to start that. And we're also really excited that we will be getting a new field out of this as well. So, that is just, it's really exciting to think about our kids having a facility that is representative of their academic hard work. So, as we think about some of the gaps that we see within our school, we came up with some interventions, thinking about academic interventions, also social and emotional interventions. Coming soon, we're going to be having a middle school Saturday school focused on math. We're also having tutoring at the elementary level before and after school. To promote that college-going culture at school, we had USC advisors come to the island, come to our library, and meet individually with all of our seniors, so they all have an advisor. We also have a process called the SST process, which will identify students who are struggling, and then as a team, we come up with interventions to help them out academically. Also, we have, knowing that social and emotional component is really important. Mr. Hall has been, has been organizing middle school lunch sports, trying to create some activities for our middle school students who are, who are not able yet to play in high school sports, but have a whole lot of energy, and they just need that energy directed in the right places. So, middle school lunch sports. We've also engaged in quite a bit of restorative mediations between students when conflict does arise, how do we handle that? Embedded SEL lessons, the social and emotional learning lessons our teachers are trained in, and really embedding that within their daily lessons. And another resource that we have is the Guidance Center from San Pedro, who come out here, but also will hold Zooms for us on Fridays. So, some of our school needs that we have identified, that we want to be in open conversation with the community about. One of the needs is the reduction of traffic flow at drop-off and pickup. That has been a challenge for us, so we're looking at different ways for our elementary and basically our K-8 site to have a safe pickup and drop-off. If you've been to campus lately, you'll see that we restructured the layout of the campus. This was done for two purposes. One, it was done to accommodate our Measure E construction flow over the next five years, but it was also really done looking at the past safety needs of the campus and the culture of students on campus. We moved our high school students to the lower turnaround, so that they have their own separate entrance and exit. They basically have their own little campus at the bottom of our school, and then we took our elementary and housed them in the main buildings with our middle school students. So, the top of the campus is a K-8 site, and this was then strategically based on research of the benefit of middle school students being the oldest on their campus and being in leadership positions, as well as the safety issues, as in regards to bathrooms, supervision, all of that. And so, that has caused now congestion at the top of our campus for our K-8 pickup and drop-off, so we're looking at ways to navigate that safely. Another need that we've identified is really having community support for our middle schoolers, also for our high schoolers, but we know that our high schoolers work, they have sports, so just focusing on our middle school students. They could really benefit from community spaces after school, where they're engaged in positive activities, community mentorship programs after school, something along the lines of like a youth center, anything of that sort that we could offer our students, because we can give them the most structured environment during school hours, but if that doesn't follow them with some consistency outside of school, we see that students tend to fall off and really struggle. So, being in open conversation with the community about how we can support our kids outside of school hours is something we're really looking forward to doing, and is a huge need for our school site. We also would really love mentorship with civic groups, particularly mentorship from folks that are, would like to connect with young people, can build connections, maybe even coming in one day a week at school, and checking in with like your assigned mentee, we think would be really, really powerful. And again, that structure would follow our kids outside of school as well, because they would see their mentor in the community, they would know that they're accountable, not only within our school walls, but also outside. Some events that we've already held at the middle school and the high school level, they each were able to have their first dance in the gym. Like I said, we had our middle school lunch sports, our high school just completed volleyball and their, and football. Now, we'll be going into basketball. We've had class competitions at both levels. Yesterday, we had Dr. Baines from JPL come out and present. We are also looking forward to an Avid 9, which will be for our freshmen, a trip to Six Flags. Our eighth graders as well, thinking about later on as they transition to high school, how to support them. And then, we've also had quite a few senior events already, and so, we thank the community for their support with our seniors, and there's more to come for them. At our elementary level, we've had character edit awards, where Mr. Hall and I have gone to classrooms, and teachers have nominated students who have shown the character trait of the month, and we've awarded them, and, you know, kind of made a big deal about it. They will be having a music concert, the traditional winter concert at the Casino is scheduled for the ninth. Mariners Foundation has been really great in supporting our students and our kids. They are funding field trips to the mainland, to Museum of Tolerance, up around the Pacific, California Science Center, so they have a range of things coming up for our kids. And then, also finally being able to connect again with our, with Catalina Island Conservancy, and they just held their first field trip a couple days ago. So, our girls volleyball, we just want to highlight a couple of our sports teams. They did a really great job, their season did end, however, they were undefeated Academy League champions, CIF Southern Section Division 9 semifinalist, and Division 5 first-round participants. And we also want to let our community know that our football team is doing really great. We will have our semifinals this Friday, Gemma Shottelfield, at 5:00 PM against the California school for the Dubs. And then, just to highlight some of our clubs this year, we have a high school interact club, and then we're also, for the first time, able to start a middle school interact club, to really plug our kiddos into community service, and linking them directly to, just meeting their goals and serving the community in a positive way. And then, our middle school has their own student government body with officers this year, and our high school continues to have their functioning student body with president, vice president, and officer clubs. We also, and I didn't highlight it here, for the first time ever on our school campus, we started our first gay straight alliance, and so, that's offering a really important outlet for our LGBTQI youth on campus. We are very proud to say that we have quite a few kiddos in that club, and they're very excited to start initiatives on campus, working in our school garden also, starting an educational campaign for their teachers and staff in regards to LGBTQ student needs that teachers may not be aware of. So, we're really celebrating the start of that club, and that club sponsor is Ms. Julie Kilpak. And I know that was a lot of information, but that's what's happening at school.
And you still have the Booster Club and the PTA, those are still going?
Yes, yeah, we have PTA, Booster Club.
Yeah, PTA is very active, and they, you know, they have a suggestion box for us, for teachers as well, to help them think about some events that they would like funded, or some ideas, you know, so they're really active, and we really appreciate them.
And this year's PTA president is Ms. Ruby Angle, who's also our phenomenal health assistant, and she's really gotten us through the start of our school year, all of COVID testing, it's just been wild. So, she, you can get in contact with her through her school email or calling the school.
And maybe this is for David, do we know if the teen center's going to be opening up?
Currently, right now, no, the county won't let us do it.
Oh, the county won't let us do the teen center, okay.
Just like with the sports programs right now, it's...
I know, he's going to tell you to get up to the mic, but that's okay. And just like with the sports programs, you can't do those either. And one other question, is the field going to be astroturf or grass?
I believe it's going to be astroturf.
Well, you know, I, I love all of the stuff that you've laid out, but I know, as a city official, and some of us are very frustrated with the behavior of our children in town, so whatever we can do to help with that, I like the fact that you, you know, you've got a plan in place and whatever. What I'm sad to say, I, what I don't see anymore are consequences for anybody's actions. And I know that's frustrating for law enforcement, for other people that are sitting in this room, and the disrespect that these children have for, for anybody, and even themselves. So, I know you've got a big, that's a big chunk of meat to chew on, and I wish you luck with that, but whatever we can do, we're here. I think everybody in this room would be, is with you, so...
Yeah. I think with our expectations assemblies at the start of the year was a big push to let our students know the consequence system that we have at school. And then, we've been very explicit with parents that this year, we have a zero tolerance when it comes to certain things. One of those is the use of substances on campus, bullying, threats, open defiance. We have been conducting random searches on our students. That's something that is new, because it's been regular, and so, that has gotten mixed messages from parents, but we're doing it because it sends a message to our kids and also promotes safety. And so, I think for us at school, we're definitely really structured in the consequences for our kiddos, but we also need the communities to support us in that effort. And I think that that's an ongoing conversation, but we have to be in partnership outside of our school walls as well.
No, I appreciate, I appreciate that. I like that you used the word kiddos.
Yeah, they are.
I think Cindy has a question.
Yeah. Wow, that was one of the most energizing presentations I've seen in so long, and really, really exciting. Thank you very much, you guys, for being here. One of, just a quick comment regarding what we were just, what you were just saying there, it's, I've been pretty intricately involved, a little less though, since the pandemic began, but for the six years prior to that, every meeting, sometimes two and three times a month, different meetings, parent group meetings, trying to help better our educational environment. And what, what's happening right now is just so awesome to see a lot of those discussions truly coming to fruition. But one common thing that has been there all along is the "not my child, not my kid." And so, I really appreciate your touching on that, and also asking the community... And so I really appreciate your touching on that and also asking the community as a whole to be responsive to the changes that we're trying to see. And Annie hit it right on when she said that there's a level of disrespect that's become a little unprecedented and we all have to work together and that comes from us as employers that are, have the youth working for us and teaching them good manners and teaching them how to navigate appropriately. So I appreciate all of that, thank you again. I do have a question regarding the pathway to academic success opportunity that UCI made available to Avalon schools. Can you guys touch on whether or not we are going to be participating in that, part of that $15 million grant opportunity?
Yeah, so we, and I'm sorry, I, Cindy, I think I actually am supposed to call you back about that, but we definitely want to participate. The rolling deadline for that is open to us to start in the spring as well. Our pathway program is really in its infancy right now, so we would probably start in collaboration, looking at our curriculum and linking it to UCI resources with Paul and then building out from there for next year so that we can fully participate with our students.
That's fantastic and I just want to say that I'm available to, to help in any way. I really want to see that program come to fruition for us. So anyway, thank you very much, both of you for being here and for all you're doing for our youth.
Thank you.
And I just wanted to say, this is the second time I've heard a presentation from you guys in the last couple of months and it's, it's amazing. Good work. I like, I'd like where you're going and you're including everyone and I just, it's very inclusive and I think that's great. So just want, kudos to you guys.
Thank you.
For coming and telling us what you're doing.
Yeah, thank you.
And then one of these days we'll get together and talk because I'm really concerned about a future workforce for Avalon. And if everybody goes away to college, so many of them will not be able to come back and, and they won't come back. And we have a couple of electricians, a couple of plumbers, a handful of carpenters. And if you look at the age of most of them, they're 50 plus. And we also need to be able to take care of our town and, and those occupations make huge amounts of money, you know? So I know we need to work on workforce housing, but if we can also get them interested in the trade so they can live here, because some of the kids really would like to stay here, you know, so that's all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll see you next semester. Okay, Department head reports.
Good evening, Bob Greenlaw, Director of Public Works. Got three items for you. Five corner project. So on Thursday, November 18th, staff will hold a neighborhood meeting for the five corner project. This meeting will focus on the improvements on the Tremont Leg. The format for this meeting will be information sharing and discussion with no decisions made at that meeting. Any approvals will be scheduled for a future city council meeting. So anybody that's participating in that, just know that it's going to be a lot of good information sharing. You can join us in person at the city council chambers here or virtually by Zoom. Info can be found on the city's homepage at cityofavalon.com. When you get there, click on the five quarters link under the capital improvement projects. It's at the bottom left-hand corner of the screen. This meeting starts at 5:00 PM on November 18th. Second item, the olive trees on Crescent Avenue, Front Street. So they're not in very good shape. We had our arborists take a look at it with our public work staff while we had the tree crews here. And we've determined that the olive trees have reached the end of their life, okay? And there is significant gaps at the roofs, at the root structure. And so we feel that they're not safe and also they're not thriving, so we need to do something different. So we need to put a plan of action to take, remove those trees for the safety and aesthetic value of that. And then we'll need to come to council to determine what we put back in place. So a selection of tree species or we've also talked about the ability to have shade structures where they could be founded in there and we could have some lower plantings below and not have so, in replacement of the trees, we put something that we get a landscape architect designing something that could be a little spectacular, you know, but that would fit there and actually add to the aesthetics too, but also provide that shade, okay? So I think some of that, there's good and bad in that message.
No, but it'll get rid of all those cockroaches that are in the base of those, down in those things that come out at nighttime.
Yes. Definitely there is an issue with that. Okay, and then the fire hydrants on Whitley, police report that the crews, our crews finished the second hydrant today. We still have to backfill that because we're waiting for geordal construction to get the materials for the backfill. But it's safety plated up right now and so that's the second fire hydrant that was across from East Whitley that was in bad shape. Last week we completed the one that was up by Whitley Arms and that's totally complete. The second one was a little more work to do. We had to go halfway out in the roadway because of the materials that were used when that was initially installed and so we had to go chase that back halfway back to the main line. While we're there in the roadway, we put an isolation valve, that we'd like to have an isolation valve on each one of those fire hydrants. There's many of them in this community don't have an isolation valve. So that if you have something that happens or you have to service them, you can turn off just the fire hydrant service and it doesn't disrupt all the rest of the saltwater flow. Okay, so that's what I have for you tonight. Any questions?
Questions? No, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Good evening, Orin Karstarven, Harbor Master. Okay, so with mild evenings and warmer than usual daytime temperatures brought many boating enthusiasts to Avalon over the weekend. Harbor-related businesses saw a jump in activity as the weekend visitors enjoyed the beautiful weather, cooler, mild conditions are expected this week through the weekend. Now for the numbers, patrol moored 421 vessels for a total of 1,891 nights. Patrol did 20 warning and advisements, responded to one medical, which was a first aid only, provided 41 public assists, which we provided nine toes and responded to two wrap-ups. Patrol did 96 security patrols and one Coast Guard assist, three cruise ships called to Avalon during this period. Harbor maintenance crews continued their busy schedule repainting and refurbishing the nine ramp hoists located on the Pleasure Pier. All docks and floats along the pier are also receiving attention as we schedule each one for the routine maintenance throughout the winter. Harbor patrol officers attended the marine protection area training, otherwise called MPA enforcement training on November 3rd. Avalon Harbor has two marine protected areas within the city limits with Lover's Cove MPA being one of the oldest marine protected areas. A total of eight MPAs can be found around Catalina Island. MPAs are credited with fostering diverse and healthy habitats and safeguarding the ocean's resources. For more information on Catalina's MPAs, you can visit www.mpa collaborative.org. As a reminder, we do have the 72-hour time limit for the dinghy docks. We do use red tags to mark the vessel's painters. So if you see one of those red tags on your dinghy, make sure you break it. Those who need a long-term place to leave your dinghy may use the string line, which is provided by the city. If you need further instructions, stop by the Harbor Masters office.
Any questions or comments? Thank you, Orin.
Thank you.
David Hart, Community Service. First of all, I want to thank the school for being here. Already there's better communication between us and the school on events just this year with Steve Hall as the Activities Director, helping us pull off the Halloween parade this year, getting all the kids and, and into it and organized. Paul Romo with the CTE program, which they were talking about. I was actually in a meeting today along with Cindy, talking about internship here at the, at the city as well as additional programming that we can do with them. And also today I met Jesse, the counselor, and we're working together to create programs for the, for the middle school and also ways to help, kind of like when we did the Long Beach Promise and we took the kids over and looking at how we can help to fund that for smaller, for younger organizations such as freshmen and sophomores instead of waiting until they're seniors. So great communication with them, really friendly, so I really appreciate it for that. Great job. So free event next Tuesday at the, at the interpretive center. The city, the Conservancy and Island Company will be doing a collaboration, a free, a free movie night, we call it campfire family fun movie night. It's will be up at the nature center at the back lot. There'll be two ways to watch it. You'll be able to bring your blankets, chairs and kind of do a picnic style up front. And in the back we'll have, for those who are a little more impaired or are primetimers, can come in and park as a driving, but there'll be limited parking spots. We kind of, because it's such a smaller area, we want to have it more, more people kind of picnic style in your blankets and chairs, so bring those. The movie will be The Lorax and we're doing this because we're doing this alongside the Conservancy. So the Conservancy will first come out and speak a little bit about sustainability on the island and we just thought The Lorax would be a fun way to introduce sustainability and the idea of sustainability to kids. Then right after that, we will have a family across the street at the campground, we will have a family, a family night out where they can all come over and roast marshmallows and, but you gotta, we're providing the marshmallows, bring your own stick, BYOS. We're, we are looking for somebody who, who plays guitar and would love to lead a couple campfire songs. I do know Kumbaya. And then also to make it more fun, your family can camp at the campground. So the Island Company is doing campsites for family at a reduced rate. So it's only $27 per campsite. Usually it's per person, but they're doing it per campsite or $65 for one of the structured tents. So they're tipping in that way. And if you need to, if you want to make that reservation, you would just contact the campground at 310-510-8620. That will be next, next Tuesday night, 6:00 PM up at the nature center. And then also next Tuesday, from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM, at the teen center, we will be handing out our annual holiday food baskets. This is where we'll be passing out 40 full turkey dinners for those families in need. We determine, we determine those needs through the school, the food pantry and people who are nominated. And then from there we, we go based on, you know, size of family and then reduce down because we get over 60, 70 nominations, but we only have enough for about 40. So it's a tough, it's a tough decision and for some people, if they don't get to Thanksgiving, they usually get to Christmas. But none of this would be possible without the donations from the Rotary Club, Lions Club and the Island Company and a really generous donation from Scott Campbell and BBK this year to really allow this to happen. So really thank all, all four of those people. Then also, just to let you guys know, starting next Monday, we will be putting up the Christmas tree and we'll be maraling up the town all the way until December 4th, which is Shop at Home Night. Any questions?
No, but the love of the enthusiasm.
Oh, thank you.
The serious stuff, you're serious and the fun stuff, you, yeah.
Dave, before you go.
Oh, Cindy has a comment.
Well, you don't necessarily have to come up, but I, I was going to do it as part of my report out, but I'll just add it. It sounds like Chet's Hardware is going to be initiating and putting together the golf cart parade for Christmas Eve. We'll work with the Sheriff's Department for a guide and we'll get some information out, but I do want to make sure that we get that added on the community services calendar of events for December.
All right, we'll put that on tomorrow.
And we'll have more information as time goes on.
All right, perfect. Thank you, Cindy.
Good evening, Captain Joe Badali from the Sheriff's Department. And as previously mentioned, Thursday could have been a very tragic day for us. If it wasn't for our partners in blue, we could have had some, you know, very traumatic events and experiences here. However, as you mentioned as well, the weather was on our side. A number of air assets came over town and from, over town to assist. We had deputies on standby from Marina Del Rey Station on their boats ready to come over and our Sheriff's Air Five rescue helicopter was going to bring deputies over. But because there were no evacuations necessary, they turned their focus over to bringing firefighters over to the island to assist the ground efforts. But great work on, on behalf of all the fire departments, both the city and the county as well as those from over town that also assisted in knocking that down. I'm happy to report that we had meetings with the sixth, seventh and eighth graders of Avalon School in cooperation with Maruna and Emma. I also provided a handout to all the kids, basically reminding them of the ramifications and penalties associated with getting fines if that's what we're going to have to turn to. We've been warning them for months and issued some citations. However, we told them that period of time is now gone because they've taken advantage of it. And just an awareness to parents and anybody listening in the community, between fines and court fees, a simple bicycle violation can be on average about $300. So let's avoid that and just get cooperation of, of all the, the kids and, and people in the community to ensure that they're safe. We did have one accident collision involving a bike and the bicyclist was at fault. And I spoke with that student, he's okay, but it was just one of those things where we knew it was going to be happening and it happened just prior to our presentation. So we're going to continue those efforts and spread that awareness around, not only with the kids, but with the tourists as well. So we just want to ensure everybody's safe. Also happy to report now that we have a 25% decrease in crime compared to this time last year. We've continued the crime trending down even with the increased tourism and visitors that we've had over the period of time, especially throughout summer and now with the cruise ships. And I attribute that to your Sheriff's Department being highly visible and embracing our community policing model. And we'll continue those efforts and although our crime is low and we'll continue to ensure it's low, we'll see what we can do to eradicate it completely and ensure that everybody's safe and everybody's properties remains theirs, so. Any questions?
Any questions, the captain? No, thank you. Nice to see you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Michael Alagria, Fire Chief. The middle fire is what they named the fire out there, about 18 and a half acres caused by the birds on the power line. From, for us, we've sent out seven personnel. Our reserves we sent were Bob Kennedy, Robert Morrison, Elena Thomas, Luis Rubio, Roger Hernandez, Mike Garcia and Captain Dave Long. I had, we had to also worry about, since everyone was out of town staffing in town. So that day, as luck would have it, I had four guys, three firefighters and one reserve doing a live fire training in Long Beach. So we were able to call them, they were done with training. We coordinated with our Baywatch captain on duty and they drove to the Coast Guard station in Long Beach and the Baywatch boat from Cabrillo picked them up and raced them across, so we had more. more personnel in town. I'd like to thank Public Works for helping us with our bathroom project. We're having some issues, and our guys fixed one of them, but the other one, we had to call on the pros, Jeffrey, Roger, they all came down, helped us get that going, and then also redid the tile. So, thank you to them. Our guys are finishing the project in our kitchen right now, where we did the floor area, so we, we finished that as well. And like they touched on at the school, I've been up there for the last week trying to help people, just same as downtown, parking in the red. They will not, people will not find the parking to pick up their kid, they expect to drive right up to the door if they could to pick them up. So, it's been tough, but we have some ideas, and we have a meeting, but people will not, people just need to find the parking and be able to walk to pick up their children. Any questions?
Any questions?
Matt Baker, Finance Department, just wanted to provide a quick revenue update. Visitor-driven revenues through September are now available on the city's website. Happy to report that the streak for TOT continued with revenues up 40% compared to pre-COVID September 2019, and up 20% compared to COVID 2020, September 2020. Remember, we had a very strong September of last year, and so I wasn't sure how we'd do this September, and we did even better, so that's great news. Similarly, ad tax was up about 25%. On the harbor revenue side, while the revenue growth wasn't as strong as we've seen with TOT and ad tax, it's still on track to at least meet, if not beat, our budget estimates. Use fees were up about 2% for the month of September, cross-channel warfage was up around 4%. And I'm happy to report, we did have our first cruise ship return in the month of September. Occupancy on those ships are a bit lower than kind of what we previously had seen, but we kind of planned for that when we came up with the budget estimates, and hopefully that'll trend upwards as the, the industry recovers. Other than that, the audit's progressing well. I plan to have Davis Far out here in January to provide a, a report presenting our audited financials, so that'll either be the first or second meeting in, in January.
Great. Questions, any questions of our finance director? No, thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
Good news. Okay, Michael Palmer, do you have anything to report?
Just two quick updates. Thank you all to everyone who came out for the Housing Element Community Presentation. We will be coming back out to the community. We do have surveys that are available in English and Spanish. We've got them printed out, and they're up at the front. We also have a whole bunch of surveys available for anyone who's interested in filling them out over at the planning department. So, if you care about housing, or if you think you have something to say about housing, please, please lend us your, your opinions, we'd love to hear it, and we'd love to incorporate that feedback back into the draft Housing Element Plan. The second update that I wanted to just quickly highlight is we have a new planner. She'll be here tomorrow for the planning commission meeting, her name is Susanna, so hopefully you'll start to see more of her as well, so with that, thanks.
Excellent. And city manager?
Mayor, I have nothing new to report or to comment on, and I just want to thank all involved with the fire for their swift action.
Yes. And does the city attorney have anything to say?
Just to note that we have two ordinances tonight that are a result of state mandates, and there'll be more coming, specifically SB 9, which deals with single-family homes and regulations that you have to adopt. So, these are things that the state legislature has mandated that cities do, and there'll be a parade of them coming over the next year, two tonight.
Okay, thank you. Council member report?
So, a few things, I attended the Housing Element workshops, so thank you to city staff for doing that on a Saturday, and for those that attended. And then also attended the LA County redistricting meeting on the 10th that took place. I've included council, and Denise sent some maps out for everybody to review, some of those. And the question I had for you was if you would feel it appropriate for me to speak on behalf of the council tomorrow at the next meeting for public comment, to be able just to voice our support for one of the maps.
So, there are, there, some of these maps would move us, but do we want to stay?
Both, there's only two that would actually keep us kind of where we're at.
Right.
And the other ones kind of move us into a district that goes up the coast.
Okay.
Cuts out San Pedro and Long Beach, and I think anything that we, that we're involved in.
Michael, can you talk into the mic for us, please? I'm sorry, we can't hear you.
If that's some of the districts, some of the proposals put us on again, a district that goes up the coast, takes us out of San Pedro and Long Beach's sphere, and I think we need to stay within those. A couple of them, one's really odd in that it goes Long Beach, San Pedro, and then up the coast with us. The other one, and there's another one that's pretty much centrally located as the Long Beach-San Pedro area, and then us. But, but yeah, some, some of them are really strange, but two of them would be okay, where we're still within the sphere of influence with Long Beach and San Pedro. Considering that we use those ports, that they bring the people here, I think that's our, that's our type more than Redondo Beach, or Hermosa Beach, or, or Malibu, or, I, I don't think we need to be involved in that.
So, there's the one that goes up.
Michael, are you referring to map B?
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm talking, I would be map.
Yeah, is it map B?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, that's what I was bringing, was just the idea that map B might be the most ideal. There are a couple of other maps that they put up as potential alternatives, but the maps, I was looking through them, don't necessarily make that area any better than what map B provides in terms of covering the ports that access our island, covering the area that most of our residents tend to use for certain things, whether it's going to, you know, stores, doctors' offices, or whatever, and then also covering an overlapping area for Long Beach Unified School District as well. So, if you guys are okay with that, then I would just make that a mention tomorrow at that meeting.
I think that's great.
Okay. And then, just a heads up for everyone, there are also the California State Redistricting maps that all are coming out, they just put those up a couple of days ago. And so, right now, all of those map very similar to where we are now in terms of our relationship to primarily Long Beach and parts of San Pedro and the surrounding cities for that, both for the assembly map, the congressional map, and the, the Board of Equalization. For the Long Beach Unified School District, I actually didn't find out there was a meeting until after the meeting was over last night, so I don't know if you guys have any input on what that looks like, if there's any concern or requests or, you know, want for where that redistricting takes place for Long Beach Unified in terms of the coverage area for the Board of Education. But I just, I don't have enough info on that to provide to anyone yet, so.
It doesn't look like they did drastic changes.
It's not, yeah, it's not significant, so. And then, we'll be attending the workshop on Thursday for Five Corners, so thank you, Bob and Public Works for doing that. And then also, we'll be attending the California Air Resources Board on the 19th. And then also did attend on the 10th, the EPA NOAA update from Senator Feinstein's office. They're working on compiling information for an informant, informational website, so as I hear more about that, I'll let you guys know kind of what the updates are, so.
Lisa?
Yeah.
Before, before you stop, sorry, I didn't want to interrupt you. Regarding the redistricting, I think map D is very close to where we are right now, if I can see it correctly on the screen here. So, I, I want to make sure that we are giving the option of both B and D.
Okay.
And, and not just supporting B. I think B is, takes us a little bit more out of the Long Beach area and kind of up the coast a bit.
D, Cindy, D doesn't cover Long Beach at all.
Uh-uh.
If you look on the basket, I don't, yeah.
Yeah, it does not cover Long Beach.
D, I assumed also the same thing as well, and thought that D was better for us originally, but it actually, if you, they don't, so, problem number one for redistricting, they didn't actually put us on the map, which is real fun. It's probably a good thing to remember to put us on the map, guys, thanks. But if you look at the, there's a two-page portion of her map, D, the second portion of that map is just in yellow, and it puts us squarely with Palos Verdes and parts of Santa Monica, and nothing in Long Beach whatsoever, or any of the ports.
Oh, okay, I see, so, so D puts us in District Two.
Uh-huh.
That's the, I'm sorry, I'm looking at this upside down the way it was.
No, yeah, it, it got me first, too.
Really difficult to see this.
Yeah.
And just like, and stuff like with the cog and stuff, where they always kind of like forget that there's an island city in the cog, and they forget to put that map in some of the stuff, so they kind of did the same thing with B.
Yeah, most, most of them included us, which was nice.
I, I think in defense, though, Avalon is included.
Oh, yeah, no, 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 I'm, no, no, I'm just saying, it used to be, they always would forget.
It's literally just the sizing of the map that's the issue, it's not that they forgot to actually include us with any council.
Right, no, I understand that, I'm just saying that Avalon is on this map.
Yeah, yeah.
So, we, I mean, we are being recognized, which is great.
And then also, just wanted to give our kudos as well to the fire teams. We actually, some family members and friends got together to make signs to put up, to put on the fence on the marilla to have when they got back from in town, from out of town, and they finished the fire before we finished the sign, so. We were really, really both equally proud and thankful, so. And then thank you also to Denise for your communication throughout that as well, you kept all of us very well informed, and we appreciate it.
Yeah.
Fire chief.
Yeah.
Michael?
Fire chief, thank you.
My only thing is that along with December 4th, Shop Avalon, the Rotary will be doing its second annual gingerbread decorating contest. It's $20 to enter, and you can either pick up one of the kits at the Seacrest Inn, Chad's Hardware, Island, wait, Island Wave, and...
Open map, Cindy.
Oh, and Leo's Drug Store. But to enter, or you can make your own, but it's still $20 to enter, and so please, special.
And Yessenya?
Nothing tonight for me, thank you, Annie.
Okay, thank you. Tomorrow, minutes with the mayor, 4 o'clock. I also attended the Housing Element meeting, and it was great because I think they said we, we were three times as many people this year as there was the, the last time they did it, so that's all good news. And, oh, and Cindy, was this calendar from you?
Yep.
Thank you.
I put my birthday in there for you, too.
Oh, did you? Oh, good, thanks, okay.
I did, yep.
All righty. Okay, thanks a lot. Okay. Oral communication.
Annie, I have a short report.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No problem. Just wanted to, somehow I got myself involved with the California Emerging Technology Fund. I will be agreeing to serve on the expert advisory panel for the research study on affordable internet models. This is co-sponsored by Pew Charitable Trust and University of Southern California Annenberg School for Communication and Journalism. So, I'm hoping that I can help with Avalon and the work that Lisa and I are already doing to bridge the gap and provide internet service for all Californians. But I'm, I'm gonna work for our region right here. And then also wanted to give a shout out to not only the firefighters for their work in last week's fire, but also to the conservancy, who was extremely communicative, especially with all of us tour operators, providing us an opportunity to get, for, for our business, to get our hikers off the trail, to be able to communicate with them, and make sure everybody's gear was, was brought back in safe. So, there was, we appreciate the way in which we are all communicating nowadays, and it certainly made it a lot more easy to, to handle. I was myself out there at the time and saw some of the work being performed, and, you know, it's just, it's, it's really inspiring to see how well everybody works together for the benefit of the island, so thank you to everybody, and that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, and sorry, I forgot you. Oral communication, this is an opportunity for people in, in the public to address issues that are not on the agenda. You will be limited to two minutes, and no action will be taken.
Good evening, Paul Birchall, Avalon Library. Just a couple of quick announcements. I wanted to call attention to the virtual programs the library offers through the library's website, lacountylibrary.org. Coming up on the 17th, we're going to do a talk on what is wind with a meteorologist. It's meant to be in connection with the wind chimes I was giving out all last week. This is the program that's supposed to be set up for it. Unfortunately, I gave out every single wind chime last week, so I don't have any to give out now, but the program that's in contact with it is on the 17th, it's about the science of wind. Coming up on the 18th, we have a class online on basic art techniques that's taught by Claudia Hindu. She's come out to the island on occasion, led a couple of very nice classes here, but this is gonna be online from library headquarters. Coming up on the 18th, the LA County Department of Public Works is going to be hosting a virtual program about water, how exciting, and its infrastructure, also how exciting, how it flows, how, how dams work, how storm drains work on this dusty desert island, I don't know how much we need that right now, but, you know, there you are. On November 20th, we're hosting creative career paths with a virtual talk with a lady who is a film and TV costume designer. She's gonna talk about how to get into the business, and what she does, and how her creative mind works. In terms of our physical library, we've received a lot of entries in our bookmark contest. We're going through them right now, I should have the winners pretty soon, should have four winners in each grade group. I'm gonna send those in to be put in the big hopper for the supervisors to draw them, their winners, but I'm gonna have like a set of prizes for the local winners as well. I'm still giving away a lot of activity kits. I have a, several Native American ledger art projects, which come with some beautiful graphic pencils. I have some cord wallets, where you take two pieces of fabric and put some cord to make a little wallet. I've got lots of origami, I got some, lots of decorate-your-own fans, and lots of coloring pages, I've got lots of stuff. Library's still open, and that's my two minutes, I suspect. Thank you very much.
Perfect. That was great, thank you. Okay. Anybody else? No? Consent calendar?
We have eight items this evening on the consent calendar, and one of which is the city council acting as the Avalon Municipal Hospital Board of Trustees. The first one is minutes from the regular meeting of November 2nd, 2021. We have warrants for a total disbursement of $920,928, and that is included a one-time successor agency expenditure. Number three is to adopt an ordinance of the city of Avalon revising Article III of Chapter 3-1 of Title III, transient rental licenses of the Avalon Municipal Code, codifying the city council's ability to set penalties for unlawful transit rental use, and adopt the resolution setting forth the administrative penalty amounts for the violations. Number four is to approve the resolution of the city council of the city of Avalon approving application for per capita grant funds. Fifth one is to adopt a resolution approving the annual application for the TDA funds for fiscal year 2022. Sixth is to determine that the COVID-19 state of emergency proclaimed by the governor still exists and has been considered by the city council in deciding to continue to have teleconference meetings, and that state and local, or local officials have imposed or recommended measures to promote social distancing and to promote social distancing in connection with COVID-19, and that as a result of the COVID-19 emergency meeting in person would present imminent risk to the health or safety of attendees. And remember, that has to come before the City Council every 30 days. So because of the time gap between now and our next meeting, it will be on the very next meeting also. Number seven is to adopt a resolution declaring equipment listed in the resolution as surplus property, and to authorize the city manager dispose of its property by selling the property to the highest bidder. The last one on consent is the CEO and the CFO's report for September 2021.
Well, I would like to pull item three not off, just to chat about a little bit. And is there any other ones that anybody wants to pull? No? Shall we talk about?
I'll make a motion to approve items 1, 2, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8.
Okay.
I'll second.
I'll second.
Lisa's got it going. Okay, there's been a motion and a second. If there's no comments, call for the vote. Bye, Emma, bye, Maruna.
Councilmember De La Rosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Lavelle?
Aye.
Councilmember Ponce?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Cassidy?
Aye.
Mayor Marshall?
Aye. And on item number three, and I don't know if maybe this is a question for Matt or maybe Michael Palmer, but I don't have any problem with this part, but I also still want to talk about the minimum number of days. And I know if I'm the only one that's tooting the horn, you can all shut me down, but my question is, there's the permit and the license, and how much money is the permit and the license?
It's just over $3,000.
No, no. Every year when they renew?
When they renew, we're still working on the renewal, but it's gonna be very similar to the business license renewal cost, which is approximately 158 bucks.
Okay, and then the, and then the, so there's two, this is about 300 bucks, right? There's the business license and the permit?
That's correct.
Okay. And I think to maintain a CUP for $300 a year is ludicrous. If they were, even if they were renting it 15 days a week at 300 a night, and some of them are more than that, that's $4,500, and how much of the $4,500 would we get? Massa meno? I don't have a.
12% is our TOT tax.
Okay, so we would be getting at least over $400 if it was just 15 days. I just think it's a, or Matt stood up. I just think it's a minimal amount of money to be able to maintain that. But if nobody, if it's worth bringing back to discuss, fine, but if you all are gonna shut me down, I'll shut up for now.
The only comment I would make is, under the previous regulations, before we moved from a conditional use permit to a transient rental permit, there's no set amount for how much you can rent your stuff out, too. So there were a number of people that would say it was $10 and you could collect 12 cents on, out of the TOT, so.
Well, I hear you, but we have a way to audit that, number one, and we know darn well that they don't rent for $100 a night. So the fact that we haven't followed up on that and allowed that to be the way it is, I mean, because that's what we allowed, that has just been wrong over all these years in my mind, and I think they need to pay more their fair share, or because if it's not worth their while, I mean, it's keeping, it's keeping other people from maybe getting a CUP. Because at some point, we're gonna stay saturated here, da-da-da-da, we don't want any more, and, I don't know, I just think they need to pay more.
We can bring that back, if that's your direction, to staff to discuss a minimum number of nights. I mean, it's not really pertinent to the item that's before you, but we're more than welcome, if you'd like us to bring that back at a future council meeting, we can start working on that.
Well, I don't want to bring it back if everybody says no, Annie, this is all we need to do.
I think the discussion, if you can bring it back, would be either the idea of a minimum number of nights or the minimum amount required for maintaining a CUP, but I would be happy to have that discussion if others are as well.
I'd like to bring it back as well.
Okay. All right, then I'll make a motion to approve item number three.
I'll second.
Coffee book?
Councilmember De La Rosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Lavelle?
Aye.
Councilmember Ponce?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Cassidy?
Aye.
Mayor Marshall?
Aye.
Okay, we're on to general business. This is a first reading of an ordinance. It's amendments to about five sections of the Avalon Municipal Code relating to family daycare homes. And I'm gonna let Scott take this, because this is his staff report.
Yes, this concerns a state law that requires that we treat, that cities treat, quote, "large" family daycare centers the same as small family daycare centers. Before, it was about if you had seven or fewer kids, it was a small family daycare. Now, what the state legislature's done is that you have to treat that the exact same way, even you can have up to 12 kids. And so what this ordinance does is it complies with state law. It only applies for residential properties. And says that people that have residential properties are allowed, as a matter of right, to have daycare centers of up to 12 kids, and that the city cannot charge those people a business license for operating their business. This is part of the state legislature's mandate that cities provide for more childcare in their communities. And so, state law says you have to adopt this, and we've already gotten a letter from an advocacy group encouraging you to adopt this, or they haven't threatened action, but they, we are on their watch list. It will tell you that most cities in California are doing this right now. So, any questions? Happy answering.
No, I just, I, it's a shame they're just going saying childcare homes, because there's also nonprofit childcare businesses that have to pay, so anyway. Okay? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to introduce and waive all readings of an ordinance of the City of Avalon amending Sections 3-1.103, 9-3.604, 9.5-202, 9-5.302, and 9-5.402 of the Avalon Municipal Code relating to family daycare.
I'll second.
Either one.
Any public comment?
Is there public comment?
I have no public comment.
Councilmember De La Rosa? Councilmember Lavelle?
Aye.
Councilmember Ponce?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Cassidy?
Aye.
Mayor Marshall?
Aye.
Okay, number 10 in general business is the first reading of an ordinance amending Chapter 6-2 of Title VI, sanitation and health of the Avalon Municipal Code relating to solid waste collection and organic waste disposal reduction requirements. Michael Palmer was tasked with this ordinance, and he really had a hard time. Stay away, Michael.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, members of council. In 2016, Governor Jerry Brown signed into law SB 1383, which basically just set methane emission reduction targets for California in a statewide effort to reduce emissions of what they call short-lived climate pollutants, or SLCP. These targets that was set by SB 1383 mandate that there's an achievement of a 50% reduction in the level of statewide disposal of organic waste from the 2014 level by 2020, and a 75% reduction by 2025. There's also a requirement to have not less than 20% of the currently disposed edible food to be recovered for human consumption. The law grants CalRecycle the regulatory authority to achieve the organic waste disposal reduction targets. CalRecycle, they are able to act in a couple of different ways to make sure that SB 1383 is enforced, including through the conduction of frequent inspections, taking over direct enforcement on noncompliant businesses within the city, establishing a schedule for city compliance and a probationary period, and/or seeking administrative penalties against the city up to $10,000 per day. There's some specific emission reduction goals that SB 1383 mandates, and these are for cities and counties. I'm gonna read through a couple of them, because I think they provide kind of the framework for the proposed ordinance in your agenda packet. The first one is that it provides organic waste collection services to all residents and businesses that cities adopt and develop an enforcement mechanism or ordinance by January 2022, which is the item right before you. Establish an edible food recovery program. Update the city's procurement policy to purchase recycled content paper and recycled organic waste products. Provide outreach and education for generators, haulers, facilities, edible food recovery organizations, and municipal departments. Plan and secure access for recycling and edible food recovery capacity. Monitor compliance and conduct enforcement and maintain accurate compliance records. Proposed ordinance addresses the SB 1383 regulatory requirements that the city needs to enforce on organic waste generators, the haulers, in this case it'd be CRNR, and other entities, including the requirements for generators to participate in organic waste collection programs. Multi-family and business owners and property managers support, to support organic waste disposal reduction. Commercial edible food generators to recover edible food through contracts or written agreements, and some others. So the main changes to the existing municipal code in the ordinance include updating the definitions to comply with the specific state recycling requirements on businesses. It also provides consistency with the Public Resources Code and the California Code of Regulations. It develops requirements for single-family generators, so this is single-family dwelling units essentially, including that all residents have access to an organic recycling program. This is what's gonna be identified in by the green organic waste container, and all residents participate in the city's three-container system. So they'll have a three-container system, blue for recycled materials, green for organic waste materials, and gray for all other solid waste. Residents have an obligation to place all organic waste in their curbside recycling container, once this gets rolled out and implemented. There's requirements for commercial businesses, which include businesses and multi-family properties. So how they define that in the code is five or more dwelling units is considered a multi-family property. They also need to have access to an organics recycling program, again, as identified by an organic green waste container. Businesses also have an obligation to train staff on which materials are acceptable in the recycling and organics recycling program, similar to what the existing program that we already have, mandating our restaurants to separate out their organic food waste. They also have an obligation to periodically monitor for contamination of recycling and organic recycling streams. There's an edible food recovery requirement for Tier One commercial food generators. Tier One commercial food generators are defined as those like supermarkets, grocery stores, with a total facility size equal to or greater than 10,000 square feet, food service providers, distributors, and wholesale food vendors. They will begin their requirements beginning January 1st, 2022. Tier Two commercial edible food generators are required to comply by 2024, and these are like the large-scale events spaces, such as potentially the casino and some of the other places. It's based on capacity. Last, the proposed ordinance includes requirements for haulers and facility operators to provide reports to the city, and requires the city's exclusive franchise hauler, which is CRNR, to provide organic recycling services and take organics to an organic waste processing facility. Here, most of that would be composted down and either used for compost or fertilizer, or in the, where we're able to take alternate daily cover diversion credits, it could be used for that as well. So with that, the recommendation before you is to introduce and waive all readings of the ordinance of the City of Avalon amending Chapter 6-2 of Title VI, sanitation and health of the Avalon Municipal Code relating to solid waste collection and organic waste disposal reduction requirements, and determine the project categorically exempt from CEQA.
And again, just to really summarize, this is the state mandate, and what the state has done is said you have to adopt this by the end of this year. And essentially, what it does is, in order to meet these mission goals, that everyone in the city's gonna have to separate their trash into three containers. One for your cardboard boxes, one for your, you know, your just kind of regular waste, and then the other for your food or leaves, kind of green products. And so that'll be, you'll see three trashcans soon, starting throughout the city, and we will be bringing back an amendment to the CRNR agreement to account for the fact that they're gonna have to make extra pickups and have extra bins.
Is it possible? I mean, I know how big our current trashcans are. For some of us, you know, two in a home, we don't have that much of that disposed-of edible food, or, you know, so is there something we could get smaller for those households that don't really have a lot of that? Because then you're also talking about a plastic bag to put it into, a big plastic bag for a little bit of stuff.
We're working with CRNR to develop the size requirements for the collection.
Okay, okay.
The only issue is, is that anything organic, you're gonna have to have a lid on, because even if it's a small or big thing, if it's unlidded, the animals are gonna get to it, especially your crows.
Oh, I know, but they've gotta make something smaller. I mean, so hopefully you'll look into that when you're doing that. Because as pointed out, our alleys are already congested with trashcans, so.
And is Avalon environmental back to separating the trash again?
They are currently diverting where they're required to. They're not actively using the material recovery facility. Unfortunately, that's a trend that's not just here, it's throughout the state of California.
They're saying because of COVID, or what?
Partly due to the COVID pandemic, and partly due to some of the new requirements that they're facing in order to implement these effectively. So they still have diversion requirements. That's part of SB 1383, and those diversions are still happening, but they're not source separating out. This will almost eliminate the need for that, because all of the organics will be collected in a separate container, and will no longer need that. And there's gonna be cans for cardboard, glass, and aluminum.
Well, and hopefully we can still work with CalRecycle to figure out how to do our aluminum and our others, to actually get those things recycled, because that has not happened in a number of years. And I know there's, CalRecycle hasn't moved on it, but VON's had a requirement to deal with that in one way or another, and that, to me, hasn't happened. So, so this thing came out in 2016.
Will the agreements with CRNR be brought back before January?
Did you hear that? She said, well, the.
For why? Because it says on here that the city is currently renegotiating with them.
Michael, they're asking you about the amendment to the contract.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear that.
Oh, Michael, the question is, when do you think, I'll paraphrase it, we have to enter into a new, a modified agreement with CRNR? What's the status of that, and will that be brought to the council before January 1st, 2022?
We are working on that. We have gone back and forth with a couple revisions. Right now, CRNR has a copy, and we're hopefully in the final stages of revisions. So it's anticipated that this'll tentatively go before council on December 3rd.
Okay. And this thing came into, in 2016, and everybody's just now starting to deal with that?
Well, no, what happened was, is the diversion requirements came into effect in 2016, and then CalRecycle has just said, this is how you gotta do it, so now all the cities are racing to get it done, following the direction of CalRecycle, which wasn't given five years ago, was just given recently. There's even some legislation right now that's making its way to. There's even some legislation right now that's making its way to allow cities to, because this was imposed so lately, to allow cities to request exemptions from this requirement if they can't get their ordinances together in time.
And Scott, correct me if I'm wrong, but I also believe that they've delayed the, some of the penalty phases for cities not in compliance. So the penalty phases will not happen right at January 1st, 2022. That's been delayed for, I think, a year or two years.
Oh, good, okay. $10,000, I think, yeah. Okay. Is there any comment other than ours? Okay. Action? Who wants to take it?
I'll make a motion to introduce and waive all readings of an ordinance of the City of Avalon, amending Chapter 6-2 of Title VI, sanitation and health of the Avalon Municipal Codes relating to solid waste collection and organic waste disposal reduction requirements, and determine the project is categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act.
I'll second it.
Move in second, and call for the vote, please.
Councilmember De La Rosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Lavelle?
Aye.
Councilmember Ponce?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Cassidy?
Aye.
Mayor Marshall?
Aye.
The last item on general business this evening is the city manager, the new city manager's employment agreement. And just as a quick recap for the public, that the city had put out an advertisement for this position, and it was open for almost two months, and we had 38 applicants from that pool. City council picked 12 to, they narrowed it down, and 12 were interviewed, and then from there, they went down to four candidates, and they had a second round in-person interviews. And we are happy to announce that David Maestros has accepted your agreement, and so tonight we're asking you to appoint him and to also approve his contract, and I am very excited that David has accepted. I think that he is going to be a tremendous asset to the community and to the city crew. He will be bringing a wealth of knowledge and over 23 years of experience, and David and his wife, Mary Beth, are very excited to make this move to our island. And the start date is February 1st.
Oh. All righty. Somebody like to take action?
I'll make a motion to appoint and authorize execution of the employment agreement for city manager services with David Maestros.
I'll second.
Move in second, any comments?
I have no comment.
Okay, let's call for the vote.
Councilmember De La Rosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Lavelle?
Aye.
Councilmember Ponce?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Cassidy?
Aye.
Mayor Marshall?
Aye. And before we go into closed session, I would just like to ask, and we can discuss it at the next meeting, about the second meeting in December, depending on the agenda. I know I'm going to be gone for quite a period of time, and I don't know what else is going to be on that second meeting, but if you would maybe consider moving it up a few days to that Thursday or something, the week before, just a thought, and we can discuss it next time.
And as of right now, because one of the councilmembers, I can't remember which one, asked me to look, and as of right now, there is nothing slated for that agenda.
Oh, okay.
That doesn't mean it won't change tomorrow, but...
Well, I know, yeah. I mean, if it's really important, I guess I can zoom from somewhere, but, my God.
Okay, and we're going to be going into closed session. It's conference with real property negotiators. The property is 206 East Whitley Avenue. The agency negotiator is Denise Ratty, a city manager. The negotiating party is George Parquet and Cory Hoyt, Community Builders LLC, and under negotiation is pricing terms of payment.
Is it possible to have the finance director in there?
Absolutely.
Okay. Just in case we need to, you know, depending on what we talk about, and... So Matt, you heard that, Mr. Baker?
We're hanging in for a while.
And we're back from close... We're back from... I'm sorry, we're back from closed session.
There is no reportable action.